Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Committee of the Whole slash Finance Committee meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd. Time is 17:30 hours. We'll start off with the roll call. Mr. Arlington?
Copley.
Here.
Hanlon.
Here.
Hines.
Parrish.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Here.
Rossberg.
Here.
Williams.
Yurichuk.
Here.
Okay, next thing on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the November 19th meeting? If so, I'd here like a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion in a second.
In a second, okay. All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
That brings us to draft legislation. The first thing is a resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the City of Wadsworth on behalf of the State of Ohio to reimburse its water fund for the Wolf Avenue Improvement Project with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the State of Ohio. Who would like to speak to that out there?
I could speak to the substance of this is essentially the reimbursement through what we refer to as an OPWC grant through the state in the amount of $560,000 for the completed Wolf Avenue Improvement Project. So essentially what happens is we front those costs, we receive the reimbursement, and then we'll take that reimbursement, put it back into the water fund, if you will.
Now, it's $560,000?
That's correct.
Mr. Stugmeyer, would you handle that since this would fall under--
Yeah, we'll do that under service and close the end of the year and everything, suspend and call that.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay, we'll do that.
That'll be Resolution 24-13.
13, thank you.
Okay, next thing is resolution. A resolution by the City of Wadsworth supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-
Quincency.
Quintennial America 250th. A pile. Who would like to speak to that one?
I'll speak to that. Economic Development Director Morris has asked me to put this on, and I believe this was discussed at the EDMP meeting.
It was.
It essentially is a prerequisite requirement for the city to apply for a grant in commemoration of the 250th. The grants are really only up to about 5,000, but it does give us some room to do something in celebration of that. So he's asking for your consideration of that resolution at this time.
Mr. Yurichuk, since you're chair of the EDMP, what is your pleasure?
Yeah, definitely. I'll take that and suspend and call it for--
Okay.
That'll be Resolution number 24-14.
Okay, we got another resolution. A resolution declaring the necessity of the removal of snow and ice during the snow season of 2024, 2025 from the parking spaces, sidewalks located in downtown Wadsworth. You guys can read all that. Who want-- Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Copley. So each year, the city gets bids for snow and ice removal downtown and on the south end. And it's to basically cover sidewalks, on-street parking, parking areas around the businesses. And what we do is we get the bids, and then if we get enough folks, meaning at least 60% of the property owners in each area, so 60% of the downtown property owners, and then a separate petition for the south-end property owners. If at least 60% of them agree to the assessment, we basically enter into the contract and pass whatever costs are incurred for the snow and ice season for those services on through assessments the following year. In this case, the south-end property owners, 63% of them requested the assessment. Downtown area, 71%.
63 and 71, okay.
Yes.
So we got both areas. Any questions on that? If not, Mr. Rossberg, this is kind of a public waste thing.
Sure.
Would you, and I'll suspend that and suspend and call?
I will suspend and call.
Resolution number 24-15.
Okay, that takes us to ordinance to authorize the drawing of a warrant in an amount not exceeding $9,243.12 for the payment of the amount due upon contract with Gardener Service Company LLC and declaring emergency. Who wants to speak to that?
I'll speak to that. Thank you, Mr. Copley. In essence, there was a purchase order. It was erroneously closed before we received this invoice. So the Service Director's Office had a large purchase order with Gardner Service Company for the HVAC replacement and remodeling project at City Hall. Separately from that, unrelated to those services, the IT Department entered a purchase order for work done in one of their server rooms. There was a miscommunication on the part of my administrative assistant and, in essence, applied the invoice for the IT Department against our PO and said, hey, you guys don't need your PO open any longer because we've covered the bill, not realizing that together the two purchase orders were needed to cover the total cost of both bodies of work.
Okay. That would probably fall under ways also, Mr. Rossberg?
Sure.
What do you wish to do with it?
Well, suspend and call it. Let's get these people paid.
Okay.
Okay, ordinance number 24-173.
Moving on, an ordinance levying special assessments for the repairing, replacement, or construction of certain sidewalks and declaring an emergency. Is it-- who wants to speak to that one?
I can speak to that. Essentially, this is for the '23 sidewalk program. This is a regular legislative step in that sidewalk assessment process, if you will. This is the actual assessment legislation. Essentially, I think of pertinent importance to counsel is that folks are given until May of '25 to pay the actual assessment. It is only upon the end of May, I believe, that those assessments then can be recorded and added to the tax records at that point in time. So they are still given a period of time to pay the assessments, and most folks already make arrangements to do that, but those who do not, the assessments will be placed after May of '25.
Mr. Rossberg, that probably also fall under this.
I have a question on that, too. On, in that legislation, in Section 3, if you look at that, it's just a question on the date there. The assessment shall be payable in cash flow later than May 31st, 2025. Go to the final statement, all assessments and installments unpaid after May 30th. Shouldn't those dates match, or would the one be before the other one? And May the 31st is a Saturday, so not that that would matter, but those, I would think that the May 31st needs to be changed to 30th, correct, or?
That's a question for the law director.
Right.
Yeah. I know Jared's standing in here, or sitting in at this point, but I believe that is a simple typographical error, but I don't, I don't know that.
Well, the legislation that was originally sent out a couple days ago had that date at May the 31st, 2024. And I see tonight, the 20, the year was corrected, but the actual day was. So I just wanted to do that before we got it.
Or we would need to amend it.
Yeah. It once, once, we don't have to yet.
Figure out what date we need.
Right.
I would just put it on--
But May 31st would be a holiday.
Well, it's a--
Because that's Memorial Day.
It's Memorial Day weekend, I said.
That's the weekend. That's, May 31st next year is a Saturday.
Yeah, but it's, it's a holiday. So, I mean, city offices will be closed, no matter what day.
The Monday before would be the holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready.
My suggestion, if council would entertain that, would be that we read it as it is. We will have the law director weigh in and correct it, and we can pass it.
Okay. I just, I just noticed the difference, okay. And one quick question on that, too, from Mr. Hiscock. The people that are, that are on that list there, will they receive bills in the amount that's showing on here from the contractor or the city to pay?
I believe they receive those from the city, but only after the legislation is passed.
Right, right. Okay, so those will be sent out afterwards. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rossberg, would you move that to second then, please?
I will move that to second.
And that is ordinance number 24-174.
24-174. Okay, that takes us to an ordinance authorizing interim director of public service to enter in agreement with the county of Medina, Ohio to provide for the services of the county building department to the City of Wadsworth for all residential, non-resident, commercial structures and declaring emergency. Mr. Hiscock?
Yes, this is an item that we've spoke a couple of different times at EDMP on. This is actually authorizing myself to enter in on behalf of the city to an agreement with Medina County to provide building department services, since we no longer have a building official in-house. So that would allow us to do this.
Now, what type of cost are we incurring to us, or is it just their fees and stuff's going to cover their cost?
There is, the fees that they will collect as part of our processes will cover their costs, so there is no additional fee that they will pay to us, or, excuse me, that they will charge to us.
Charge us, okay. So they're not charging us per inspection or anything like that?
No.
It's all based on their fees.
No, they are not.
Any other questions on that?
Yes.
For how long a period of time? Is this until we hire a building inspector, or would you say we're not building, hiring?
It's actually, there is no termination date in the agreement, but either party could terminate with 30 days' notice if we had to. So I would tell the council that this is an agreement in perpetuity, absent any changes in the arrangement.
Thank you.
I, I like that the idea that we're sharing with another government entity, the county, and using their talent, when we may not have as much or much flexibility. I appreciate that very much. But since we're farming out or subbing out a service, I want to know who is supervising this in case there is issues, you know, for the city.
Sure. So we still have a zoning and planning director, if you will, and they work closely with the building department already. So Mr. Kaiser would be the point person on day-to-day activities. He also has an administrative assistant who works closely with the building department, already having these relationships in place. They will be the day-to-day point people. I will remain as the overall agreement point person, along with the county administrator, Mr. Springer, who has agreed to do that on his side, so that essentially as we get going here, if you pass this legislation, I'll be involved, I would imagine, for at least the first three months of activities, making sure that we're smoothing out any issues that we come across, making sure that the process is working as anticipated, and then I think we will hand off more to the day-to-day folks in the building department at the county level, as well as in our planning and zoning department here.
Thank you.
Sure. Unless the law has changed, also, the director of public safety by the higher revised code is in charge of the building department for the city by the ORC.
That is by ORC. Traditionally, it has always been below the director of public service duties. Yep.
Okay. So that would fall under buildings. So again, Mr. Rossberg?
We discussed that one in EDMP.
That was EDMP.
Yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Under, yeah, building and planning.
That never came to--
It should have been under safety, probably, but, okay. So, John?
I'll move that to second.
And the number is?
Uh, sorry. Ordinance number 24-175.
Thank you.
When does this agreement start, January 1?
It would, it's January 1, so if, unless there is something I have not answered, I'd ask the council's consideration in perhaps passing that this evening, if possible. The reason being is there's some preemptory work that both departments want to do with each other prior to its effective date on January 1.
Do you think we can wait till Tuesday if we're going to have--
I believe we could, if you're considering it on Tuesday, yes.
Okay, move that to second.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Next is an ordinance amending ordinance number 98-48 to increase the threshold of the tax exemption before requiring a revenue-sharing agreement with the Wadsworth City Schools and the City of Wadsworth Community Reinvestment Area Program as defined in ordinance 98-48 and declaring an emergency. Who would like to speak to that one?
I will, Mr. Copley. Mr. Morris also asked me to speak to this item to council this evening. This was something that was discussed at EDMP. Essentially, the ordinance, if considered and passed, would just adopt the state thresholds that have changed from 50% to 75% in order for the city CRA agreements to be considered in terms of the sharing with the school district. So right now, it's at 50%, however, the state statute changed to 75% in terms of consideration. This would just align our local ordinance with the state code.
Mr. Yurichuk, I think that would fall under you.
Yeah, I can move that to second as well.
Move to second?
That'll be number 24-176.
And the last one, an ordinance authorizing expenditures for refreshments or meals to be served at various events and programs. Mr. Hiscock?
Thank you, Mr. Copley. Each year, we specifically identify expenditures for meals, food, refreshments that are not related to conferences that exceed or are expected to exceed $3 per recipient. And we do that because of an attorney general's opinion from 1982 that says, hey, we can only spend money on this kind of stuff if it's approved as a legitimate government purpose. So we spell out those items in the attachment or the exhibit to this legislation for council's review and adoption that these are legitimate business purposes. Each of the items are basically originally broken down by department, and then within department, by sub-department, and then a further breakdown of category, whether it's community events or Chamber of Commerce luncheons, those type of things.
Mr. Hiscock, could you speak to what disaster services includes? Because I see $3,500 here between fire and police for disaster services.
Sure. So, so those include meals that we would have to call out for in the event of an incident, not necessarily something that qualifies as a quote-unquote disaster, but an incident where we would have unusual costs or times in service where we would want to provide meals or some level of refreshment to responding crews.
So that's different than the fire call-out meals for $500?
Slightly, slightly in terms of the magnitude of what might be needed. That's the difference that I interpret those two different items from.
Okay. Any questions on that? Who would like to take that one? Susan, would you mind taking that?
Sure. Okay. And that's ordinance 24-177.
And put that on second, or?
Yeah, that can go to second.
Second, okay.
Okay. Now, next is city council agenda review. So I'll move it over here. Okay, the first one's ordinance number 24-175, and that was Jeannie Hines. It was an ordinance to amend Section 3531 of the Codified Ordinance of City of Wadsworth to increase the compensation presented to council, council membership clerk of city council, beginning in calendar year 2026 and declaring emergency. I did notice on this particular ordinance that we need to move it on because it's showing here 2025 on the actual ordinance. That needs to be changed to 2026. We cannot pass a raise for ourselves when we're seated. Mr. Hiscock, do you agree with me on that?
I would, I would tend to agree with you on that. I think it does need amending. So if you'd like to move it to a reading, perhaps, again, then we can amend it.
Yeah, we're just moving on. Since Jeannie's not here, who would like to move that to third reading?
I can move it to third. Yeah, I'll move it to third.
Mr. Stugmeyer?
Mm-hmm.
And then Julie, if you'll make sure the law department gets that amended, then the next, next meeting we can amend it.
Sure.
Move it forward. The next one's an ordinance to amend Section 3436, Codified Ordinance of City of Wadsworth to provide for the allocation of income tax receipts of $3,779,416 during the fiscal year 2024. This is on third reading, and it's yours, Mr. Rossberg. What do you wish to do with it?
Um, anyone have any questions on Mrs. Six? She's in the gallery.
Yeah, that, that was for the 2024 income tax allocation, so it doesn't have anything to do with the '25 budget.
I'll just call it.
Call the question?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, 24-160, an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $5,800 in the 110 general fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. Ms. Hanlon?
I don't remember what that's for.
I can speak to that. That is for the remaining fees from the building department currently serving us through the end of the year without a building official. That's what those were--
Okay, so I'll call the question.
Call the question. An ordinance authorizing director of public service to enter into a contract with structure personnel incorporated for the leasing of employees from said employment agency to be responsible for the seasonal flushing of hydrants and the seasonal collection of yard waste and leaves and other needs and declaring an emergency. This is also on third reading, and Ms. Hines was handling that. Who would like to pinch-hit for her?
I can do it.
John?
I can call the question.
Mr. Yurichuk, okay. Call the question. Has anyone got any questions on this first page?
No.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-165, an ordinance to change the compensation rate for the volunteer fire service and EMS service employees and declaring an emergency. Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
It's on third reading?
Yes. And if anybody has any questions, I'll call.
Questions, anyone? Okay. Number, ordinance number 24-166, an ordinance to amend Sections 3544 and 3546 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the clerk of the municipal court and for the chief probation officer and for the probation assistant and to declare an emergency. Mr. Parrish, this is also on third reading.
If no one has any questions, I'll call on that also.
Okay. Amended ordinance number 24-167 is also on third reading, an ordinance to amend Section 3528 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the assistant director of law beginning in calendar year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ms. Hanlon?
I would call the question unless there's any questions.
Questions?
No.
Yeah. Ordinance number 24-169, an ordinance, it's also on third reading, an ordinance to amend Sections 53, 16, 97, 15, and it goes on forever. Mr. Yurichuk?
Call the question.
Call the question. Ordinance number 24-170, an ordinance to enact Chapter 157 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency. Mr. Yurichuk?
Call the question on that as well.
24-171, an ordinance to enact Chapter 158 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency. Mr. Yurichuk?
Call the question on that.
24-172 is the third reading, ordinance to establish impact fees for Chapter 158 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Wadsworth declaring emergency. Mr. Yurichuk?
Call the question.
Call the question. Okay, that takes care of the council agenda. Anyone have any comments or questions? Can we move on? Yeah, that brings us to other business, and tonight, our other business is going to be budget discussions. And the way I'd like to do this, I'm going to start with Mr. Hiscock and let him go over what they've received, what they've done or haven't done, and then I'm going to ask each council member to give their input, because I'm sure everyone's got some questions on, on the budget. I took the liberty to email my concerns to Mr. Hiscock. I don't know who else has, but, you know--
Mr. Parrish, I have also.
And I'm also going to ask that the council clerk enter my concerns into the public record, so it becomes a public record. Okay?
I request the same.
I received it. Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Mr. Hiscock?
Thank you, Mr. Copley. Members of council, so as, as has been indicated, I think what I'll do is just work through Mr. Copley's concerns that were shared with me in the order in which he listed those. I think it would be easier. He, he began with some capital items and then moved to some more operational-based concerns, so that's the way we'll go. Then I believe there was another email that Mr. Copley shared with me with a couple of other items.
There was three.
I'll handle those, and then I'll move to Mr. Parrish's concerns, although I think there is quite a bit of overlap on, on some of those. So if we want to talk about that during the first review, that, that's fine with me. So the first item--
If I may interrupt, if you have any questions while Matt's presenting that, please ask him then, so you don't forget him, and so that he can expound upon what's your question.
That would be great.
Okay?
Welcome. And I would also ask our, our team, if there's anything that you'd like to add in response, please do that, too. So the first item has to do with the proposal in the '25 budget for the Brickyard project, if you will. So I think the first concern that was raised was a concern that, that the city had not secured at the time of the budget proposal access off of State Route 94 through our neighbors' properties, the State Ed's property, if you will. And I'm happy to report to council at this point in time that State Ed's representatives have indicated to the city that they will provide access to State Route 94 through their parcel. So that is something that currently Economic Development Director Morris is working on with their attorney to, to record or memorialize that particular agreement. So we do have that secured at this point in time. Mr. Stugmeyer?
And is that down that road, that, that bumpy access road that we've gone down through there before, or is there, are they looking at someplace different?
It's, it's two possibilities.
Okay.
One possibility is along that bumpy access road--
Okay.
--that you make reference to.
It's already there.
But they also identified a possibility and a willingness to provide an access road south of their facility on their property that would lead back to our property, the Brickyard property. So there's two potentials. I think there's a little bit of them evaluating internally, which they'd like us to receive, but they've basically assured us that it'll be one or the other in terms of access to the Brickyard. So that was a, one item. I think I'd like to expand upon that a little bit in this particular discussion, and this does touch upon a little bit of aspects of, of what Mr. Parrish raised in, in some of his budget concerns, but also sticks to a little bit of what I've heard from several different council people about that particular project. So by way of background, so the city purchased the property back in 2023 at about $1.9 million with the intent of using that property for an athletic complex and a passive recreation park, if you will. The discussion that was always laid forth for that purchase was a reality based upon a public survey, which our community took part in, identifying that there is a lack of suitable ballfields existing in current city parks. And so that came about through the Parks Master Plan project, if you will, as well as many of the other identified parks projects that have come about. So that triggered the opportunity for the city to acquire that particular parcel. And again, that occurred in 2023. Since 2023, we have engaged with the Brownfield Restoration Group, which is an environmental group, to help us analyze that particular property with the ultimate idea that we would get recommendations from BRG for where, for instance, different aspects of the park, once it was designed, should be laid out. Knowing the prior use of that particular property, it was important for us not only to make sure that it was safe for development as a park, but also that we understood what areas we could capitalize on using perhaps brownfield grant dollars to construct the park. Things like using artificial turf as a potential cap for areas of the particular facility, using parking lots or access roadways as particular caps for areas that had been identified as perhaps environmentally sensitive and needing that particular cap. So we've already engaged that particular entity at no cost of the city's, using EPA dollars for all of their analysis work to date. So we, we're well on our way to taking a look at what we do and how we do it out at the Brickyard, if you will. It's important to note, I think, that even our proposal, a $12 million proposal, a large expenditure in the budget, I think we all understand and recognize that, this proposal is only a Phase 1 proposal for that particular project. So if, if you were to consider and, and agree that it is time to move forward with that particular project, know that there are probably future phases to construction that would be included out there. So we're not, we're not looking for the whole kit and caboodle, if you will, at this point in time, but we are looking at a large potential project and expenditure here. I think it's important to note, too, that the city has already received $2.5 million in one-time strategic community funds from the state. We have that in-house already. We have that as we sit here tonight in, in terms of that. I know that there's been some discussions and some concerns raised about the cost. So I want, as we open this discussion a little bit, I want you also to know that the administration has heard those loud and clear, and if you're uncomfortable with that $12 million number, we believe that there are some alternatives that we'd like you to at least listen to before you make your final decision on the '25 budget. And I can get into those now if you'd like. If you'd not like, and discuss a little bit, we can do that.
I'd also like to have them in writing, if you don't mind, so I can look at them.
Okay. In writing is fine, but it won't be anything more than what I'm going to tell you now, right, right now. So one of the potential alternatives, if we are uncomfortable in any form or shape with the $12 million price tag attached to the proposal as we currently know it-- with the $12 million price tag attached to the proposal as we currently know it, is a scaling back of the project in '25. That scale back could include, if you would consider this alternative, construction of the utility and access roadway infrastructure at a cost estimated by the administration to be about $5.6 million. That $5.6 million alternative would include and would require enterprise fund debt issuance in that amount. In addition, building rather than just infrastructure and a roadway to nowhere, we would propose that we use some of the $2.5 million in state grant dollars that I just mentioned to build at least a portion of the athletic complex. We know that $2.5 million won't build four fields, as we're proposing, but it might get us somewhere down the road for some fields in this initial phase in '25. That would be alternative one that we would propose. Secondarily, we would propose this alternative. It would not...
Matt, can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
So, that alternative would be, would cost $5.6 million?
Plus... Let me bring out our...
Plus 2.5.
Yeah, it would be $5.6 million of utility infrastructure-related costs. And by that, it also includes an access roadway, if you will, above those utilities. That would be $5.6 million. As currently proposed, we believe that would come from utility debt issuances. That's probably where it is. Maybe not so much the roadway aspect, but the utility aspects would. And then we would use $2.5 million in the infrastructure one-time strategic dollars, if you will, to fund some portion of the park build, if you will. And by that, I mean the athletic complex side. A field, perhaps, maybe a parking lot to a certain extent, those aspects on top of that. So, rather than just doing infrastructure alone, where essentially we would have a roadway to nowhere, if you will, on the athletic side of the fence, you'd have some field that our constituents, our public, could enjoy at the first base.
With that access road in the north, if State Ed's decides that, of course, that would go into a Phase 1, which is upfront. If they decide to go, or we decide that the agreement is to the south of the property, unbeknownst how much cost that would be to get that access road back up to our Phase 1, because it's going to have to go behind State Ed's, back up towards the Vail Road. There'll be some additional initial costs to make that functional right off the bat. Now, eventually, it wouldn't, because of Phase 2 or Phase 3 would move back down toward that area, but initially, the decision to put it down there could cost a little bit more money to tie it into Phase 1, correct?
Maybe not. Knowing that we don't have a design, maybe we move Phase 1 closer to that south entrance.
Okay. That's been my issue all along. We don't have a design, because we don't know where the access road's going to be.
Right. Well, now, that was part of my...
Once we get the access road, then we can design, then we can get a more concrete cost of what this is going to cost us.
Well, at least we're still with them on that.
Right now, for all this scientific estimates, basically.
They are truly estimates at this point, because we do not have a design.
They're strictly estimates. We don't have a hard cost, and to sign a blank check for $12 million with no access points, no design, I think that's just asking a little bit too... Because it's not our money. It's the residents' money. It's not our money. We can't give them a picture of what's going to be there, because we don't know. We haven't designed it.
We don't have that yet, but I guess that's what our ask in the 25.
But designs aren't going to be $12 million. I would be all for doing a design, and then doing like we did down at Durling and every place else, come back for a supplemental appropriation in March or April after the design work's done, to start the phasing of it, once we find out what we're going to do. Not just a blank check for $12 million.
Well, again, I would tell you, let's say, if you were to approve the $12 million, and maybe that's off the table at this point, but let me just use that as my... Remember, council, just as we did in the Memorial Park improvements, every step of the way, we are required to come to you for authorization to enter into any expenditure above $50,000. I think all of these expenditures will be above $50,000. So, you still have that legislative control, which you should have, in terms of any agreement or contract that we may choose or recommend to enter into. That's... Sorry.
So, by, like, if we did go ahead and say, okay, $12 million, but knowing that every time something is spent, you know, we're going to get approval, it reserves that money in the budget for the Brickyard. I mean, because if you don't put it in, it could get spent on something else. You know what I mean?
And it may have to be. If we had a major water breakers up, then we may have to spend that money on something else, so why tie it up?
Right. Well, could we move it? You know, if it's appropriated, but then it's in the budget, but it's not spent, it could be moved, right?
I would say it could be, but we usually try to appropriate dollars for a project.
Yeah.
With that large of a number, I will just go out on a limb and tell you that we would not take that money and move it somewhere else for use, certainly without council understanding that.
Right.
But I think it would be extremely poor practice for us to do that. An emergency, as Mr. Copley dictates, we come to you and say, listen, we've had this disaster, and we can no longer move forward with this project and this expenditure, we need to redirect those expenses somewhere else. I think the issue becomes, from a debt issuance standpoint, what are we bound to use those dollars for, and what are we not bound to, which is another part of the equation that we must collectively consider, if that's the way we fund this particular project. You know, we can't use debt issued by the utility funds for a non-utility purpose, let's just say, in general, at that high level. We can't do that. But I think Mr. Copley raises an interesting other alternative. So, if council has some concerns with the amount of the project at this point, and you're willing to move forward in a design aspect, maybe we should look at that as an alternative, because that will get us further along the process to move forward, and if you're all comfortable with... I see some head nodding. If you're more comfortable with that, that is an alternative, that we can go back, take a look at, and maybe bring to you next week, if we're having a special meeting, take a look at that option, in addition to the third option, which I haven't really... Or our second option, but the other option that I haven't gotten to yet.
Can I have some clarification? You said the enterprise fund. Is that internal from the utilities companies, or is that external, we going out and getting bonds for that? That money, that $5.2 million or whatever, internal or external money?
$5.6.
So, Mr. Parrish, excellent question. I don't know that I, or Ms. Beck, although I don't want to speak for her, has that specific answer for you tonight. I think we would want to analyze what that cost would be, and then determine, do we have the ability to issue bond anticipatory notes for that amount, or would it make more sense to roll it into an actual debt issuance, which would go out to the market?
Right. That would have a bearing, I believe, on our debt situation, and we have a big debt situation coming up with other issues, too.
It is, and that's something that I think we would probably want to consult with our municipal advisors and figure out how to go ahead, what the best course of action for that debt might be. I don't think we would do that internally.
No. And I believe this was funded by debt anyway, the 12, so if you choose for a lesser option, that's going to reduce the amount of the debt in the utility funds.
We're taking small bites at the elephant. That Brickyard project is an elephant. It's a big project. We need to take small bites. That's the reason for my questions.
Yep. So, if I could finish with my second alternative for you, and it's maybe reorienting the discussion a little bit. So, remember, we talk about the athletic complex a lot, and that's what some of our alternatives we just discussed about. The next alternative does not address the athletic complex in '25. It actually addresses the passive park aspect of the park, and it would not include any debt issuance in '25 whatsoever. It would really be a design and a focus on the construction of the passive park elements out at the Brickyard, which would include the creation and construction of two trailheads. Trailheads essentially are nothing more than parking areas and some restroom facilities. It would be a more thorough cleanup and removal of debris within the passive part. If any of you have been out there or remember your tour, there is some work to be done in that area, and it's kind of difficult to get to some of that area, so there's probably some costs involved with that. It would be a more formal establishment of the trail network within the passive park of that area. Think of any nice park we've all been to in other communities. They actually have a combination of either asphalt or cinder-laden trails. It would be the creation of that kind of trail network within the park. And we believe we could do most of that work within the confines of that $2.5 million state grant fund. So, we could, as an alternative, if we're not quite ready to move forward with the $12 million Brickyard project, this is a possible alternative for your consideration to maybe focus not so much on the athletic complex, but more on the passive park, get that in place, using some of our one-time strategic grant dollars. It is a definite scale back from, I think, where we would like to be, but it is an alternative to move forward.
So, would that still require the road work?
I don't believe so, because we're really building the two trailheads, one on Wall Road, if you understand that. And again, I'm using the term "trailhead."
Right.
If you think about a park that you've been to, it's really a parking lot, perhaps some have restrooms, some do not. That particular on Wall Road would probably need a composting restroom, because it would be probably too expensive to bring utilities to that particular area. And then there would possibly be another trailhead at the rear of the new development on 94 South there. If you've ever been through that development, there's a stub that comes right up to the edge of our Brickyard property. We might want to build a trailhead there. But I think a bulk of the dollars probably need to be invested in really getting to and cleaning up some of the areas of that passive park that need thoroughly cleaned up and removed, things like old vehicles, car parts, tires, debris in general. It just needs a very thorough cleaning and removal of debris. And then the construction of more dedicated paths. We all, if you've been back there, you know there are existing trails that probably don't need to be expanded to, but there's ruts, and there's areas that are not walkable for people that we want to invite to the park to do that. We need to clean up those particular areas and build the appropriate trail network, so they can be used by our constituents. That would be another alternative that the administration has considered in lieu of moving forward with the full project and full funding.
And looking at the design aspect of it, if, and you know, we have to be financially responsible first, but my question on this is, if we don't, at this point, put in one or two ball diamonds back there, what does that do to our other park plans that we have done, where we haven't removed those or going to remove those? Is that going... That will delay something in those aspects, and at that point, is there funding that's there that we will lose by not doing... You know what I'm saying? How complicated does it get if we don't have one or two ball diamonds out there? What does that do to our other master plan with all the other parks, if anything?
Mr. Dugmire, it's an excellent point, and it is one of our ramifications of not moving forward with the athletic complex to some degree. The whole idea was to phase the improvements in our city-owned facilities already, to make those improvements after we had completed Phase 1 of the Brickyard. The reason being is to not lose any field usage. If we already know, and one of the reasons we acquired the property is that we don't have enough ballfields to meet the needs of our community, why take a ballfield away at a park without already having some of those replacements in place? So, that's why we wanted to push, and that's why you see the $12 million project in your 25 budget proposal, because there is a realization that we need to move forward on new ballfields, because the current ballfields are not meeting the needs, and these would move us forward. In addition, we know through the Parks Master Plan, there is a whole myriad of other improvements that are planned in the parks, which cannot move forward in certain circumstances without the ballfields being removed. And because when those ballfields get removed, they need somewhere to play ball, that's why we wanted to get these, the park in place, those fields in place, in advance of doing those future improvements. Additionally, as the council probably recalls, we have ODNR grant dollars available to us for some of those other city park improvements that we need to capitalize upon in a certain timeframe, or there's a potential, potential. We've been very successful in working with our partners at the state level to extend grant dollars beyond some of their limitations, but there's always a potential that they pull some of those dollars back from us.
Well, that was my big concern on that, because I knew we had dollars planned on those, and some of them were grant dollars, and if we don't, if we can't finish the parks with the money that we've been granted, what happens to that if we can't extend it?
But there is a potential we lose that money. Again, we would work very hard to try to make sure we didn't lose that, those dollars.
Okay.
But at this point in the equation, we've only lost one ballfield.
That is correct.
And if we do the improvement at Freed Park, which is already planned, then we'll be back to the same number of ballfields while we do the design and everything at the Brickyard.
You are correct.
And those will be lighted, right, at Freed?
Freed, it'd really be one large ballfield, which could have multi-use, and our intent is to use the lights off of the Memorial Park field.
Oh, right. Okay.
And that's in the 2025 budget already.
That is correct. Yes.
So, that would not... I mean, we would be replacing the one that we lost.
Right.
We just wouldn't be adding right now until we get the right...
Adding right now, or moving on with some of the other amenities in the current parks, because we don't want to get rid of those diamonds now, because we don't have a place to put them? Okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
If we had discussions with Medina County Parks to partner with them on the passive part of that park, like we did at Holmes Brook, they're experts at it. They've done an incredible job. That might save us some money and have a great outcome out there on the passive side of it.
I would tell you, Mr. Rosberg, I have not specifically spoken to anybody at the Parks District. I believe before my time, there had been numerous discussions about that. I'll let Mayor LaBaw.
I was going to say, there had been discussions, but their interest at the time was to basically use the whole southern part for mountain bike trails. So, it would fairly eliminate some of the more passive aspects that were looked at. But we are certainly aware of their expertise. We're enjoying that in Holmes Brook right now.
Well, it might be worth revisiting, if a couple of years ago, it was bike trails, maybe we've got somebody else in there, and they're more willing to look at it again, because I think, take advantage of it, let, you know, get other people from the county to come in and help us out. Okay. Any other questions?
Just one quick one. I think as you put numbers together, I think you probably sparked some interest on the alternate number two, the passive park, but I do think it's very important that we have dollars in there for the design this year, so we don't lose more ground.
Do we know how much? Is there a ballpark number for that?
Mr. Testa, I'm going to look to you. Are we using the 15% rule as to design versus construction costs? Roughly?
Yes. So, we use our best estimates using the engineers. I mean, this isn't just Mike and I coming up with numbers up there. We consult with our engineering department, we look at their numbers that they've taken from recent contracts, we estimate the construction-based costs. It is an engineering standard that about 15% of that construction cost can be attributed to design-related fees and costs.
Six million?
It's still, well, 15%, of it.
15.
Fifteen.
15.
Wow.
One five. Okay.
I may have mumbled there. I apologize. A lot of numbers.
That's better. Okay.
That would be about $1.8 million on the $12 million.
$1.8, okay.
My budget issue was what we've already improved, and our current parks need some updating in places. They need painting, they need fences straightened, they need, you know, just some basic things. And I did not, I saw specifically, I think, $25,000 in the budget for, without listing all the individuals, or it was $25,000 twice. I can't remember exactly what it was, maybe a total of 50. And I would like to see those addressed before we start a new project, to make sure we're in good standing, and brought our current parks up to snuggier.
And is it possible to use that grant fund from ODNR for these improvements that Mr. Parrish is talking about? I mean, that way, we would be getting into the money, we just wouldn't be using all of it.
So, I want to make sure that I clarify. So, we have roughly seven ODNR state improvement grants for different parks throughout the city. That is different than the one-time strategic grant dollars, which were specifically dedicated to the Brickyard project, of $2.5 million. But if you're talking about the existing ODNR state capital improvement grant dollars, they, first of all, they vary between...
they, first of all, they vary between 100 and 150,000, all the way down to, I think, Safety Town was a 75,000 dollar grant. Those, those monies, some of those are already accounted for. For instance, the Pocket Park was funded partially by some of those state dollars. Safety Town was funded by some of those data. Those are accounted for, if you will, so those would be off the table. When we applied for those particular state capital grants, we had to identify the potential uses for those dollars. So I do not believe, Mr. Copley, that we could then turn around and use those dollars to maintain or approve the existing parks the way Mr. Parrish is thinking of. But we did make a conscious effort, Mr. Bellick and I, to make sure we upped the ante in terms of the funding for those maintenance-related items in the project, basically based upon some of the discussions we had had and the tour items that you had seen and some of the things that came to mind. We also dedicated quite a bit of funding resources to provide the equipment needed to the Parks Department, which we were hearing from those gentlemen that they did not have to do some of the maintenance work and those things. So I want to tell this council that we've dedicated quite a bit of funding that has previously not been dedicated to the Parks Department in a direct attempt to try to address some of our existing park conditions and give our folks the tools and the equipment and the supplies they need to maintain them the way we expect them to be maintained. And I don't think the items that I was thinking of were that great a cost. It was, you know, straightening some fences, not even replacing them, painting, painting maybe those fences that are rusted badly, you know, doing some of those basic things just to bring up the level of quality. And I'm hoping that it's not that, that extreme amount of money at all. And hopefully we can make that work. I think we're hearing loud and clear that you would like, I think all of council would like us to do a better job at maintaining the assets that we already have in addition to investments in new assets. We are making a concerted effort to do that.
It doesn't make sense to go out and build good stuff if you're not taking care of your older stuff.
Yep. Okay. Good discussion, thank you for, for your points.
We're gonna run out of time here because we've got a 6:30 council meeting.
We are, we are.
And talking with Mr. Williams, he was thinking about having a special meeting next Tuesday night. So would that work for everyone? I don't have a time or anything like that at this point, but maybe that would be a good time to carry on this discussion is next Tuesday night. Because, I mean, there's a lot of stuff on here yet.
Yeah, there's quite a bit on here and some of them are also capital items, which I'm sure will spur discussion. Some are, some are low-hanging fruit, but there'll be quite a bit more discussion here.
Yeah.
Would that be okay with everyone if we continue this next Tuesday night?
Yes.
If we err on the earlier side, yes. That hurt you?
Yeah, what time?
I have no idea what time he's thinking or anything. He didn't say anything to me. Did it you, Mr. Hiscock, when he spoke with you?
He did not give me a specific time, although I assumed it would be at our normal time.
6:30.
6:30, okay.
I'll make it work.
I'll be in Pittsburgh, I'll do.
Well, don't quote me on any of this. He just said that we could have a special meeting next Tuesday night and finish this discussion and then maybe vote on the second part, I mean, the second reading of.
And I would share with council, just from a scheduling standpoint, I will not be available on Wednesday of next week. I will be in Columbus that day.
What about Monday?
We have meetings.
Yeah.
That's already scheduled. Oh, that's right, and.
Tuesdays.
Well, Wednesday, we've got Safety Committee.
We do, and I'll be back for that meeting.
So it'd have to be Tuesday night.
That's why I believe Mr. Williams was looking at Tuesday.
Okay.
And we could have it earlier, maybe 5 o'clock or something.
No, I can't do 5.
Okay.
Well.
I can do 6:30.
We'll get that worked out.
Yeah, I can't do 5.
But we've got people waiting out here to come in and everything and I just don't want to make them wait any longer than we have because we've still got a lot of stuff to discuss.
There is.
You know, quite a bit. Okay? We'll figure it out. Okay, well, let's, this time is 6:25. I'll entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Wadsworth City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd. It's 18:30 hours. We'll start first with a roll call. Will you please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Sorry. Heinz?
Parrish?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Williams? Yurcheck?
Here.
Okay. This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, I'd like to do the invocation. Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and the privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. In Christ our Lord, we pray, amen. Let me see. Okay, next thing on agenda is roll call.
Oops, I just did that.
No, I could go where we did that. Okay, and how about approval of the minutes from the regular city council meeting from November 19th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, signature of signing aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, the next time I'm gonna ask Chief Linder, our fire chief, to come forward and say a few words.
Thank you, council. So at this time, I would like to bring up Reagan, Amy, Madeline, and Veronica, if you wouldn't mind standing up here. Mona?
So I'd like to take a moment to explain why we are here and thank you for giving me this opportunity. So on October 8th of this year, it was just like any normal day at the staff at the YMCA. At a blink of an eye, that changed. Shortly after 8:00 AM, an elderly male went unresponsive in the pool. The lifeguard staff jumped into action, the training that they received prior was put into place. The four staff members had to first get the victim out of the water and then they started completing the American Heart Association's chain of survival, which includes activation of the emergency response system, CPR with chest compressions and rescue breathing, and rapid defibrillation with an AED. They did all of this until the EMS units arrived. Most of the people that take AED and CPR training will never have the opportunity to use it. For those that do, the outcome is not always a positive one. Fortunately, the quick lifesaving action the staff performed on that day gave the victim the best possible outcome. The elderly male was released from the hospital a couple of days later with no deficits. If it was not for the staff you see here today, I strongly believe the outcome would not have been a good one. These four individuals should be extremely proud of their efforts that they completed on that day. I know I'm very proud of what they did. So congratulations, and I'd like to bring up the mayor.
You chief, and I'm proud of them too. I really am. It really is wonderful. I can only imagine the feeling that you have. As is mentioned, you have that training and never recognizing your feeling as if you really need it, but it just kicked into gear, you figured it out, you knew exactly what to do, muscle memory, whatever, but you did it. And I can only imagine how grateful the individual was that you performed that on. And certainly you really served well the YMCA and then you also served our community. On behalf of the City of Wadsworth, I'd like to present each of you with your own proclamation, but I'd like to read it to you and it states, whereas on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, quick thinking and CPR training led to the saving of a life, and whereas Reagan, McTavish, Madeline, and remind me how to pronounce it, Styes, Madeline Styes, Veronica Graves, and Amy Phillips, using their CPR training played a crucial role in providing lifesaving assistance before the arrival of police and EMS teams. And whereas the immediate recognition of the critical medical emergency and the swift selfless action of the Wadsworth YMCA staff in administering CPR and using an AED were key to saving the life of an individual, and whereas the City of Wadsworth is deeply grateful for their professionalism, expertise, and lifesaving efforts. And now therefore, I'm here, Robin El La Ba proudly proclaim, December 3rd, 2024, to be set aside and as observed as Reagan, Madeline, Veronica, and Amy Hero Day. And the City of Wadsworth, as we honor and celebrate the heroic actions of the YMCA staff that saved a life. Sign and seal this 3rd day of December, 2024, Robin El La Ba, Mayor of Wadsworth. Congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you.
I don't really have anything planned, but I, I mean, really, like, I did help get the gentleman out of the water, but like, these three are the ones that performed the CPR and AED, and they really took over. I was there helping and assisting after helping getting him out, getting him out of the water, but they, they are the ones that really performed the lifesaving. So I appreciate them for taking over and using their training, like the fire chief said. But then also the chief and everybody in the community center, Lori from the senior center and the school district and everybody came over to help, see if they could do anything because they kind of heard what was going on. And then even in the days after, people coming to check on all of us was just well appreciated. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also want to, even our members there, that, there was, my husband was actually swimming at the time and he came in and got us because we were cleaning the wreck pool and stuff. So they helped out and people helped getting clothes for him and everybody was just so helpful. It was definitely team love.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Okay, do we have any other visitors that would like to speak? Yeah, if you want to leave, you don't have to sit through all this. No one else wishes to speak? We'll move forward with the agenda then. I gotta wait for Julie, she's redoing some numbering. Are you ready?
There, the numbers are incorrect on the addendum. So we're starting with the first ordinance, the resolutions are correct, but the first ordinance should be number 176.
Instead of 176.
Correct.
176.
And it'll be 177, 178, 179, and 180.
While she's doing that, let's do the committee and commission updates. We'll start off with the Public Service Committee.
Okay, the Public Service Committee, thank you, Mr. President Protam, the, will meet on Monday, December 16th, at a special time, an hour early, at 4:30 PM here in council chambers.
The next meeting of the Public Safety Committee will be on Wednesday, December 11th, at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers. Public Ways, Mr. Rosberg.
Public Ways will meet next Monday, December 9th, here in council chambers at 6:00 PM.
Economic Development Planning, Mr. Yurcheck.
Economic Development Planning will next meet Monday, December 9th, at 5:00 PM in council chambers.
Committee of the whole met tonight here in council chambers at 5:30. Airport Commission, Mr. Stugmeyer.
Airport Commission, next meeting will be determined.
Be determined? The next meeting of the Stormwater Commission will also be determined probably sometime in January or February.
Yeah, whenever, yeah, it'll follow the Public Service Committee meeting for that month, which falls on a holiday, so when that date's rescheduled, that'll be the day of the commission.
Okay. Shade Tree Commission, Ms. Heinz is not here. The next meeting of the Shade Tree Commission is scheduled for Tuesday, April 22nd, at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. Landing Commission would meet again on Monday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM. Cemetery Board, Mr. Yurcheck.
Cemetery Board will next meet Wednesday, December 18th, at 5:00 PM in council chambers.
Cable TV Commission, Ms. Hanlon.
The Cable TV Commission will meet Thursday, December 5th, at 4:00 in council chambers.
And the Citizens' Commission, Mr. Parrish.
Yes, the Senior Citizens' Commission is gonna be Monday, this next Monday, 12:09, at 3:30 PM at the Supremis Center.
Okay, and that completes our committee and commission updates. Still putting numbers together.
So she has 275. I think this is supposed to be 76.
Okay, are you ready?
So that would be, yes, 181 will be the last one.
Okay.
And who's gonna take that one?
Give that to Mr. Yurcheck.
Okay.
So I think it's 181.
You okay with that, John?
Sure.
Okay, is there any correspondence to come through council?
No correspondence.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the reading of the legislation.
Okay. We'll start with the first readings this evening. Yeah, Resolution Number 24-13 on First Reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer and discussed at committee of the whole. A resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectations of the City of Wadsworth on behalf of the State of Ohio to reimburse its water fund for the Wolf Avenue Improvement Project, C113AA-C114AA, I'm sorry, is that CI13AA, CI14AA, with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the State of Ohio.
Mr. President Protam, I make a motion to suspend the three-reading rule on Resolution Number 24-13.
Will you please take a roll call vote?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Mr. President Protam, I call the question on Resolution Number 24-13.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Stugmeyer's proposal to call the question on Resolution Number 24-13, would the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 24-13 has been adopted.
Okay. One second. And 181. Okay. Sorry for that. Resolution Number 24-14 on First Reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at economic development and planning. A resolution by the City of Wadsworth supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial America 250-Ohio.
Mr. President Protam, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three-reading rule on Resolution Number 24-14.
Second.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes. Mr. President Protam, I move to call the question on Resolution Number 24-14.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurcheck's proposal to call the question on Resolution Number 24-13, would the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Mr. President Protam, I moved, call the question on resolution number 24-14.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurichak's proposal to call the question on resolution number 20-14, will the clerk take a roll call vote?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Yurichak?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 24-13 has been adopted.
Okay. Sorry for that. Resolution number 24-14 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discussed at economic development and planning. A resolution by the city of Wadsworth supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial America 250-Ohio.
Mr. President Protam, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on resolution number 24-14.
Second.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Resolution number 24-14 has been adopted.
We have ordinance number 24-176 on first reading sponsored by council member John Rosberg and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to authorize the drawing of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $9,243.12 for the payment of the amount due upon a contract with Gardner Service Company, LLC, and declare an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 2476.
Second.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. President Protam, I call the question on ordinance number 24176.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24176, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Yurichak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-176 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-177 on first reading sponsored by council member John Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance levying special assessments for the repairing, replacement, or construction of certain sidewalks and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Council, President Protam, I move we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24177.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Mr. President Protam, I call the question on ordinance number 24177.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24177, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Copley?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 24-177 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-178 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to enter into an agreement with the county of Medina, Ohio, to provide the services of the county building department to the city of Wadsworth for all residential, non-residential, and commercial structures and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I move that we place ordinance number 24-178 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Ordinance number 24-178 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-179 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance amending ordinance 98-48 to increase the threshold of tax exemption before requiring a revenue sharing agreement with Wadsworth City Schools and the City of Wadsworth Community Reinvestment Area Program as defined in ordinance 98-48 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I move to place ordinance number 24-179 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-179 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-180 on first reading sponsored by council member Susan Hanlon and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing expenditures for refreshments or meals to be served at various events and programs.
Mr. President Protam, I move we place ordinance number 24-180 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-180 has been placed on second reading.
And we have, we have the, we have the addition of ordinance number 24-181 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak. An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wadsworth during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, establishing a new system of funds and accounts and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I move we place ordinance number 181 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Who said nay?
Dave.
And Dan.
Three to three.
Who was the other, Dan?
Me.
Mr. Rosberg?
Mr. Parrish.
Mr. Parrish, okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Law Director. I gotta go off.
All right, catch the meeting again. There were three days, three days around.
Never seen this before.
Yeah, I don't have it all.
Stay the object.
At least since it's not past the second reading, it would remain on first.
No, this was to put it, this is to be read.
Right, this was moved to second, right?
So it won't be?
No.
This is on the agenda.
This is the first time on, it was that this was the first reading and we would move it to second.
Right, and I think it remains on first reading.
Stays where it's at.
It stays where it's at, essentially.
It just has to stay on first reading. Thank you. Now, after the regular thing.
Yes, now we're going to move on to, we have a second reading here. Ordinance number 24-175 on second reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend section 35.31 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation of the president of council, council member, clerk of the city council, beginning in calendar year 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Vice President Protam, I make a motion to move ordinance number 24-175 to third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-175 has been moved to third reading.
Ordinance number 24-158 on third reading sponsored by council member John Rosberg and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend section 34.36 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to provide for the allocation of income tax receipts of $3,779,416 during the fiscal year 2024 and declare an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I call the question on ordinance number 24158.
Hearing no objections to Mr. Rosberg's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24158, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 24-158 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-160 on third reading sponsored by council member Susan Hanlon and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $5,800 in the 110 general fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President Protam, I move that we call the question on ordinance number 24-160.
Hearing no objection to Ms. Hanlon's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24-160, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-160 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-164 on third reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing the director of public service to enter into a contract with structure personnel incorporated for the leasing of employees from said employment agency to be responsible for the seasonal flushing of hydrants, the seasonal collection of yard waste and leaves, and other needs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I move to call the question on ordinance number 24-164.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurichak's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24-164, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
And Copley?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 24-164 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-165 on third reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to change the compensation rate for the volunteer fire service and EMS service employees and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President Protam, I call the question on ordinance number 24-165.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Parrish's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24-165, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Abstain.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-165 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-166 on third reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend sections 35.44 and 35.46 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the clerk of the municipal court and for the chief probation officer and for the probation assistant and to declare an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President Protam, I call to question on ordinance number 24-166.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Parrish's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24-166, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 24-166 has been adopted.
We have amended ordinance number 24-167 on third reading sponsored by council member Susan Hanlon and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend section 35.28 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the assistant director of law, beginning in calendar year 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I call the question on amended ordinance number 24-167.
Hearing no objection to Ms. Hanlon's proposal to call the question on amended ordinance number 24-167, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Amendment ordinance number 24-167 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-169 on third reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance to amend sections 53.16, 97.15, 153.050, 153.051, 153.052, and 153.053, and to delete sections 53.02, 97.30, 97.31, 153.054, 153.056, and 154.077 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I move to call the question on ordinance number 24-169.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurichak's proposal to call the question on ordinance number 24-169, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.